Good morning, welcome to Hardin County Commissioners Court. Today is Tuesday, May twenty-sixth, two thousand and fifteen. We do have one Commissioner that's running a little late, but we have a quorum and the meeting will come to order. If everyone will please rise. Pastor Mott, will you please come forward and deliver the invitation? Thank you, sir.
It's an honor to be here today. Thank you for having me. Thank you for the invitation, Judge.
Thank you.
Let's pray together. God, we just gather here today thankful for the opportunity, Lord, to be here another day, to wake up another day and serve you another day. God, we have a lot on our minds today, not just the business of our great county, but, Lord, we, our hearts are heavy for those who've been affected by the flooding all across our state and the region, Lord. We pray for families who have lost loved ones. God, we pray for those who are still missing, Lord. We ask that they might be found. And God, we just pray that you will continue to have your way in all of this and somehow in the midst of all of this, God, we ask that you would make your name great, Lord, that you would work in such a way to deliver and heal and bring about order, Lord. We just thank you so much for your care for us, God. We thank you for this great country that we live in, Lord, as we're in Memorial Day week. God, thankful for a day of rest yesterday, Lord, but also a day of remembrance, Lord, where we remember those who have made the ultimate sacrifice so that we could have freedom, Lord. And I thank you for that freedom. I thank you for every single elected official and every single person who works here for the county, God. I thank you for them, Lord. Every single person from every single position is not here by accident, but, God, you have placed them here. And, God, I pray you would give them great wisdom and great discernment as they lead our county, as they make decisions that affect all of us, Lord. I pray you would just give them the right direction, Lord. We love you and we thank you for all these things that you have done for us and lead, God, and have your way in this meeting. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Judge Brewer, will you lead us in the pledge?
Pledge. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Judge. Item number four, Glenda Austin, County Clerk, approval of minutes of prior meetings. Connie?
I ask that you approve the minutes for May the eleventh. It's a regular and a special, and for May the eighteenth, a special.
Thanks, ma'am.
So moved.
Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Pelt. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And I mentioned earlier, we had a Commissioner running late. That's Commissioner Roberts. He'll be here in just a few minutes.
Yes, sir.
Item number six, Deborah McWilliams, presentation approval of registered claims to be canceled by court. And I skipped number five, I'm sorry. Number five, Deborah McWilliams, County Treasurer, presentation approval of cash statement.
Good morning, Debbie. On our cash report summary for today, in general checking account, we have seven hundred sixty-six thousand, three hundred seventy-four dollars and ninety cents. In our tax pull, general account, we have ten million, six hundred thirty thousand, five hundred thirty-eight dollars and thirty-one cents for total cash funds of eleven million, three hundred ninety-six thousand, nine hundred thirteen dollars and twenty-one cents.
I move we approve the cash statement. Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Kirkendall. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And now on to number six, Debbie McWilliams, presentation approval of registered claims to be canceled by court.
So moved.
Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall and a second by Commissioner Pelt. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Debbie. Item number seven, Angela Gore, County Auditor, payment of county bills.
The pre-approved expenditures and transfers for May the twelfth through May the fourteenth were two hundred twenty-two thousand, nine hundred fifteen dollars and eighty cents. The pre-approved expenditures for May the nineteenth, two thousand and fifteen, were thirty thousand, six hundred seventy-two dollars and sixty-four cents. And today, May the twenty-sixth, two thousand and fifteen, the expenditures for Commissioners' Court are a hundred and eighty-seven thousand, three hundred forty-five dollars and eighty-nine cents. The total expenditures and transfers are four hundred forty thousand, nine hundred thirty-four dollars and thirty-three cents. Gross payroll for May the fourteenth, two thousand and fifteen, was four hundred and four thousand, thirty-three dollars and fifty-six cents. FICA was twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one dollars and sixty-five cents. Retirement was fifty-seven thousand, four hundred and twenty-two dollars and ninety-five cents. The total transfer for May the fourteenth, two thousand and fifteen payroll was four hundred and ninety-one thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight dollars and sixteen cents.
Move we pay county bills?
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Kirkendall to pay the county bills. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And let the record show that Commissioner Roberts is here and voted in favor of that motion. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Sorry I'm late.
That's okay. Item number eight, Judge Charles Brewer, Justice of the Peace Precinct Two, adoption of resolution number thirteen dash fifteen, recognizing Carolyn Morrow for twenty-one years of dedicated service as a court clerk for Justice of the Peace Precinct Two and to the citizens of Hardin County and wishing her well on her retirement. Good morning, Judge.
Good morning. Do you have the other item?
I believe Rose has it. Is she in here?
Judge, you want to read them?
That item, I'm sorry.
This one. First of all, I'd like to congratulate Carolyn on her retirement. At the end of June is actually when she's leaving, but her last day is Thursday. And I was hoping, you know, that I could get her to stay with me for at least a year to get my feet getting wet, but she's decided to go ahead and retire, and I think her husband is too. And I want to ask Carolyn to come up here with me. And I also want to ask Judge Simpson to come up here. I asked Judge Simpson to give us a ten-minute speech and everything about Carolyn, and she, she didn't see that. She didn't want to, says she'd start crying. But I want Judge Simpson up here because Judge Simpson is actually the one that gave Carolyn her start twenty-one years ago. And to my knowledge, Carolyn is probably the longest-serving Justice Court clerk here in Hardin County, twenty-one years. So I think she deserves a hand for that. What I've asked, what I'm asking the court to do today is adopt a resolution, you know, in honor of Carolyn for her twenty-one years of service to Hardin County and to the Justice Court Precinct Two. And I'm going to read it and ask the court to adopt this. It's resolution number thirteen dash fifteen. Yeah, it's gonna, it's gonna state, be it remembered at the meeting of Commissioners' Court of Hardin County, Texas, held on the twenty-sixth day of May, two thousand and fifteen, upon motion made by hopefully a Commissioner and then accepted by hopefully another Commissioner. And the resolution that can be adopted is going to state, whereas Carolyn Morrow has devoted the past twenty-one years of her life to service of the people of Hardin County, Texas, with pride, great pride, professionalism and style, and whereas Carolyn Morrow has dedicated her talents and pledged her services as a court clerk to the Hardin County Justice Court Precinct Two for twenty-one years, whereas through determination and commitment to excellence, Carolyn Morrow has earned the respect and admiration of her colleagues and the citizens of Hardin County, and whereas Carolyn Morrow is recognized for her unselfish devotion to the common good and well-being of the citizens of Hardin County, Texas, and will always be dearly missed by her friends, coworkers, citizens of Precinct Two and family here at the Hardin County Courthouse. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Commissioners' Court of Hardin County, Texas, do hereby honor and commend Carolyn Morrow for her dedicated service as a valuable employee of Hardin County and wishes her the best on her retirement. And I say that she is a valued employee because most people don't realize what it, what Justice Court clerk does, and I'm not going to get into it because I don't even hardly know. But she, she pretty much keeps the judge on the right track, that's for sure. So I want to congratulate Carolyn on her retirement, and also we're going to present her with a certificate of twenty-one years with Hardin County. So this is your twenty-one-year certificate. And we also have a pin at the county, or it's a keychain with your name on it, says twenty-one years of service for Hardin County. And we're going to wish you the best of luck. Now, I'm going to ask if Judge Simpson would like to just say something because she, she is the one that gave Carolyn her start twenty-one years ago. She had two people apply for this job twenty-one years ago, and Carolyn got it. When I posted it the other day, I had almost fifty, I think. And it was a hard decision. Anyway, I'd like for Judge Simpson to say something, if you would.
Well, I'd just like to thank Carolyn for the twenty years that she gave me. She wasn't only a great clerk, she turned out to be a great friend. I didn't know Carolyn when I hired her, but she turned out to be a great friend and a great clerk, and I'm going to thank you.
Congratulations on your retirement, twenty-one years.
Thank you.
We could have a motion on the resolution.
I'd make the motion that we approve resolution thirteen fifteen.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall and a second by Commissioner Cooper. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge Brewer. Congratulations, Carolyn. Much deserved. Item number nine, Glenda Austin, which will be Connie Beckton today, County Clerk, County Clerk's Office, introduction of two new deputy clerks, Kimberly Keith and Amy Jenkins. Are they?
They're present.
Okay.
Y'all want to stand up? We have two new clerks in the County Clerk's Office, and Amy Jenkins is there on your left, and Kim Keith is on the right.
Welcome to Hardin County. Item number ten, Judge Wayne McDaniel welcomes Alicia Batista to the County Judge's Office as the new administrative technician.
This is Alicia. I think most of you probably recognize her. She's been with the County Clerk's Office for about a year and a half, and whenever I posted the position for administrative technician, she was one of our applicants and was chosen for the position and is already doing a fine job for us. And I wanted to introduce her to everybody and welcome her to the County Judge's Office.
Item number eleven, discussion action to authorize County Judge and Auditor to execute budget transfers up to one thousand dollars within any department. On this, you know that we have been doing budget transfers on any, any item that goes over. So far, we have not done any budget transfers that are under a thousand dollars. The ones that we've brought to court have been over a thousand dollars. We do have several that need to be made. Where a few dollars have gone over here or there, and instead of bringing every one of those to Commissioners' Court, I just wanted to ask for authorization for us to clean up those line items ourselves within the software program up to one thousand dollars.
And this would be money already approved within their budget?
Yes, sir. As long as it's within, as long as it's already in the budget, just needs to be moved from one item to the other. That's what we're looking for authorization to do.
This is without bringing it to court?
Yes, sir.
I would like to amend that to ten thousand dollars.
Okay.
Of Road and Bridge, there's a lot of those departments set up. A thousand dollars, you'll be amending all the time. You'll be?
I don't have a problem with that. Are we mandated by statute on budget amendments to vote on or not?
See, many, many years ago, if you did a line item transfer, even within the budget, you had to amend the budget, had to go back to the court. Then legislature changed that to go bottom line. So within your budget, it doesn't require anything, but I can see that for budget controls that it is helpful. And so, you know, I'm certainly not against it. I just believe a thousand dollars, this might fit a lot of departments, but in Road and Bridge?
It's available. And this, this budget transfer would only be within the department? In other words, if we was moving from one department to the next, we're still going to go back?
Let's say if your repairs went over and you started using out of materials?
Right.
Then the secretary would code it to materials because this other's, rather than just keep coding it there, I assume is what we're talking about. And then the judge would have the approval to do it.
We could transfer the funds so that it's coded properly to the, to the right account.
Strictly code, coding.
I would second the amendment.
Is everybody in agreement to change that to ten thousand?
Yes.
Okay. Did, did you make the motion?
I made the, well, we didn't have a motion.
You just made the suggestion to change it to ten thousand.
I will make the motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Roberts to authorize the County Judge and Auditor to execute budget transfers up to ten thousand dollars within any budget. And now, this will not be salaries, this will only be operational expenses. Just want to clarify that as well. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item number twelve, discussion action to approve and accept for filing in the minutes of the court, the certificates of course completion of newly-elected officials and/or appointed officials who completed a course of training on Texas Open Meetings Act pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section five-five-one dot zero-zero-five, and Public Information Act pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section five-five-two dot oh-one-two. Both courses were completed in January two thousand and fifteen by the following personnel: County Judge Wayne McDaniel, Commissioner Alvin Roberts, Dana Hogg, District Clerk, Deborah McWilliams, County Treasurer, Judge Charles Brewer, Justice of the Peace Precinct Two, and Judge Melissa Menon, Justice of the Peace Precinct Five.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Pelt. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item number thirteen, discussion action to approve and accept for filing in the minutes of the court, the certificates of attendance for Deborah McWilliams, County Treasurer, for the following required courses of training: Public Funds Investment Act pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section two-two-five-six dot zero-zero-eight, Forty-third Annual County Treasurer's Continuing Education Seminar, Educational Instruction, and two thousand and fourteen New Treasurer Seminar pursuant to Texas, I'm sorry, Local Government Code, Section eighty-three dot zero-zero-three.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Roberts. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item number fourteen, discussion in action to approve and accept for filing in the minutes of the court, the certificate of course completion for Judge Wayne McDaniel for the two thousand and fifteen judicial orientation, a thirty-hour minimum education requirement for new county judges pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section five-six dot zero-zero-six.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Roberts. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item number fifteen, Tamika Rinpro, Texas Department of Family and Protective Services, adoption of resolution number fourteen dash fifteen, recognizing the month of May, two thousand and fifteen, as Elder Abuse Prevention Month in Hardin County. Is Tamika here? Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you doing? Do you have a copy of the resolution?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
And first and foremost, I just want to thank the court and Judge McDaniel for giving us this opportunity to read this proclamation to the Commissioners' Court, recognizing May's Elder Abuse Prevention Awareness Month. The proclamation reads, whereas people who are elderly or have disabilities have contributed to the general welfare of Hardin County by helping to preserve customs, convictions, and traditions of many people from diverse backgrounds, and whereas these residents are vital and integral members of our society and their wisdom and experience have enriched our lives, and whereas abuse of the elderly and people with disabilities in domestic and institutional settings is a widespread problem affecting hundreds of thousands of people across the country, and whereas Texas APS in-home caseworkers in Hardin County have completed eighty-one thousand, six hundred and eighty-one investigations, of which fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and thirty-one cases of abuse, neglect, and/or exploitation were confirmed against our elderly Texans or those with disabilities in two thousand and fourteen. Whereas elder abuse is grossly underreported because the elderly who are being abused find it very difficult to tell anyone and are usually ashamed and sometimes afraid. And whereas elder abuse happens to men and women of all income levels, all cultural and ethnic groups, whether they are in good health or incapacitated in some way in poor neighborhoods and in suburbia. And whereas many of the cases investigated by Adult Protective Services in Texas involve self-neglect and it's our duty as citizens to reach out to people in need. Now therefore, I, Judge Wayne McDaniel, do hereby proclaim the month of May, two thousand and fifteen, to be Elder Abuse Prevention Month in Hardin County, and urge all citizens to work together to help reduce abuse and neglect of people who are elderly or have disabilities dated this twenty-sixth of May, two thousand and fifteen.
Thank you, Ms. Rinpro.
I move we adopt resolution number one-four dash one-five.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Roberts. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item number sixteen, Valerie Stewart, Director, Crime Victims Assistance Center, adoption of resolution number fifteen dash fifteen, authorizing submission of application number S zero-zero-four-nine dash one-six dash zero-two-zero-two for sexual assault prevention and crisis services to the Office of the Attorney General, Crimes Victim Services Division. Good morning, Valerie.
Good morning. This grant is for this year. It's, this year alone in this county, we serviced a hundred and forty-three cases of sexual abuse, both children, adult, wide variety, both men and women, both boys and girls. This, this grant here allows me to have a personnel on staff that is solely devoted to just sexual assault. The grant, the maximum is fifty thousand, two hundred and fifteen, and it's all funded. There's no cash match on it. There's, there is some in-kind match that is just volunteer hours. Grant's ready to go in. It'll be submitted today if approved.
Thanks, ma'am.
I move that we approve resolution fifteen dash fifteen.
And I just need to note for the court that there's been a change with the state that if I am listed as the authorized official of the grant, I'm not allowed to vote on the resolution, so I'll be abstaining from voting and signing the resolution. So we have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, is that correct? And a second by Commissioner Pelt.
Correct.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. And I'll abstain. Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Item number seventeen, Valerie Stewart, adoption of resolution number sixteen dash fifteen to amend previously adopted resolution authorizing the submission of application number S zero-zero-six-five dash one-four dash zero-two-three-eight for sexual assault prevention and crisis services to the Office of the Attorney General, Crime Victim Services Division, to amend designation of authorized official.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Roberts. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. And the chair abstains. Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number eighteen, David Sheffield, District Attorney, adoption of resolution number seventeen dash fifteen, authorizing submission of application number V zero-zero-six-eight dash one-six dash zero-two-six-four for victim coordinator and liaison grant to the Office of the Attorney Gen, Attorney General, Crime Victim Services Division. Good morning, David. How are you doing?
Good morning. Thank you very much. This is an application for grant funds from the Attorney General's Office for a victim's assistant coordinator, clinical positions in our office. It's going to be totally funded by Attorney General funds, all fringe benefits and everything else. It's going to be covered by the grant. The total amount that we can apply for and seek is forty-two thousand dollars, which is what we're asking for. Hopefully, this is going to help us address and provide more services to victims and also help coordinate things between us and the Victims Assistance Center across the street and just overall improve the services to victims of the county.
And I think Valerie mentioned earlier that we've served how many?
Fourteen.
Just this year alone, sexual assault victims? So that's a growing problem that we're seeing here in Hardin County, unfortunately.
David, will this?
Will this, forty-two thousand, you said it'd cover fringes and everything. Are you anticipating putting a new person on or will this money help them to pay the one you already have?
No, 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 no. This is going to be a new person. Yes, sir.
With forty-two thousand dollars covering fringes and everything, that's not going to be a very high salary. Have you got Rose on the?
It'd be really the lowest paid clinical physician in the county, but I understand the budget concerns and budget needs in all of the county at this time. While, while we would want more, I realize the financial check that we're in.
Will this be a full-time or part-time position?
It's going to be a full-time position. Salary's going to be right around forty-five thousand. Fringe benefits would be like fifteen thousand, which will cover retirement and everything else.
It says forty-two thousand per year. Is that what the grant is?
Forty-two thousand, yes, sir.
For the two-year period or for?
No, no, just for a year.
Per year. Okay.
But it is a two-year grant.
Two-year.
I move that we adopt resolution seventeen dash fifteen.
Second.
Which one, second? Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall and a second by Commissioner Roberts to adopt resolution number seventeen dash fifteen, and again, I'll have to abstain from this motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. The chair abstains. Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sheffield.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Item number nineteen, authorization for County Judge to submit Texas Department of Agriculture two thousand and fifteen Community Enhancement Fund Grant application for funding to assist with construction of new courthouse health services annex slash storage building.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Kirkendall. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item number twenty, Commissioner L.W. Cooper, Jr., Precinct One, permission to solicit bids for overlaying two thousand seven hundred and seventy-six feet on Clear Lake Road, two thousand one hundred and fifty-one feet on Andover Drive, and two thousand nine hundred and ninety-four feet on Lakewood Drive.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Kirkendall. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item number twenty-one, Commissioner Chris Kirkendall, Precinct Two, permission to solicit bids for overlaying point seven miles on Reed Ranch Road in Silsby.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Roberts. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item number twenty-two, Vivian Ballou, Grand Administrator with Griffith, Mosley, Johnson and Associates, permission to solicit proposals for professional appraisal and/or appraisal review services for parcels of land located within Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Program, DRS number two-two-zero-zero-zero-two.
We don't have that on ours, but I assume it's on yours.
It is. We didn't get you a copy of the new agenda?
I moved it. We approved it.
Okay. Have a motion by Commissioner Pelt to approve. Can we get copies of the new agendas to, at least six of them?
And that is for all, all in Hardin County.
Yes, sir. We, we covered, the Sour Lake Project is already covered under contract, and we, Jackie contacted that firm on Friday, and they have guaranteed that they'll continue with that contract. What this does is go out for bids for an appraiser for the other two projects in Pinewood and Silsby.
Marshgully and North Craven.
And both of those fall under this DRS number two-two-zero-zero-zero-two. I have a motion by Commissioner Pelt. Do y'all want to wait on the copy of the agenda or? Okay. Can I get a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Kirkendall. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item number twenty-three, Vivian Ballou, discussion in action to rescind or reject proposals received for professional acquisition services related to Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Program for Sour Lake Flood Control Improvements, DRS number zero-one zero-zero-zero-two. Again, I see that y'all don't have a copy yet.
Second.
That's for your project, Ken?
Yeah.
Yeah. We're rescinding the, the previous bids that were received for that, and then the next item will go out for bids for all three projects. Okay. Have a motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Roberts. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item number twenty-four, Vivian Baloo, permission to solicit proposals for professional land acquisition services related to Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Program for ongoing flood control improvement projects located, located within Harden County, DRS Numbers zero-one zero-zero-zero-two and two-two zero-zero-zero-two. And Vivian's here if y'all have any questions.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Kirkendall, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item number twenty-five is Jackie Ellis, purchasing agent, awarding a bid for the purchase of a cab tractor and boom mower for Commissioner Precinct One. Good morning Jackie.
Good morning. Okay, we opened bids on May fourteenth in our office at CMM, received three, uh, different bids or, or three vendors. Beaumont tractor, eighty-nine thousand, it was a Gabota tractor with a Terranquin mower. US mower, seventy-nine thousand three hundred and sixty-six dollars and forty-four cents. A Zetter tractor with a US mower. Brookside Equipment submitted two bids, one of them was eighty-eight thousand for a new Holland tractor and diamond mower. In Brookside, a hundred and twenty-three thousand with a John Deere tractor and a Tuppermower. The US mower is the apparent of bid earnest, this is...
Jackie, could I just get you to reread that bid from US mower?
US mower was seventy-nine thousand three hundred and thirty-six dollars and forty-four cents.
Thank you.
Did I miss something?
The, uh, well, the first time around, it, I think there was one number I either heard wrong or it might've been said wrong, but I just want to make sure we had it correct.
It was probably said wrong.
So be the recommendation to go with...
The low bid to go low was the US mower, was the lowest bid on that, and this would be up to the Commissioner.
I move that we, uh, accept the low bid.
Sure. Have a motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Pelt to accept the low bid. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item number twenty-six, Jackie Ellis, awarding a bid for overlaying five thousand two hundred and eighty feet of loading dock road located in Precinct Two.
We opened bids on May fifteenth at CMM in our office. We had three vendors, CMM at a dollar of five, a square yard, L and D Construction, a dollar sixty, a square yard, CCC, blacktopping, four dollars a square yard. So the apparent of bid was CMM at a dollar five.
I'd move that we awarded to CMM for a dollar five a square yard.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall and a second by Commissioner Cooper to award the project to CMM, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Anything further?
I'll move with you.
Have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cooper that we adjourn and we stand adjourned. There's a note on the bottom of the agenda about a reception for Carolyn Morrow, but that is being postponed and Judge Brewer will let us know when.
Great. Dollar five. He got right, didn't he?
Yeah, he got it right.
I know, I'm glad he did too, because that's...
I'm sorry about the agenda.
Well...